Is everyone ready? Okay. Well, it's about seven thirty and hopefully everyone that was at the first meeting was able to hike back to their cars and get back here. For those of you that did not stick around for the vote, the vote was 402 against and 304 in favor. So the option to purchase the property was put in. Okay. With that, we'll start our meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Shiger, any assessments?
Item number seven, we will omit.
Okay, item number seven, a minute, and then a change. Okay. Seeing none, let's please stand and... Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for the amended agenda. We have a motion by Betsy and a second by Karen. Given the agenda, all those in favor that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Seeing none, move. Now we can do the closing. A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just to repeat, I am because I know the media seems to be popcorn, you know, more cherries out of town. Item number three is the approval of the minutes, and those minutes were from Monday, February 26th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Aye.
Okay. Motion made by Don and a second by Shelley. To approve the minutes, all of the favor that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Seeing none. Item number four, approval of the vouchers.
Approval of the vouchers from Monday, August 26th. Checks are on the way from Milton in the amount of $665,317.22 that we made.
Okay, motion made by Betsy, a second.
Second.
Karen. All of the favor of approval of vouchers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Seeing none. Public comment, we have some people. We may ask, Betsy, if you'd be the timekeeper, would you agree to the minutes? Because we're starting late, if there's someone that has already somewhat summed up what you would like to say, if you'd like to forego your name, that would be fine. If not, you're welcome to it. We'll try to keep it under the 15-minute limit if we possibly can. Let's see, the first person that has... Signify that they would like to speak is Christine Farnsworth.
I'm coming to do my specialty, this is my professional.
That would be, are you Ashley?
Yeah.
Okay. Please state your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Christine Farnsworth. I live in Alcorn, the teacher in Milton. Hi, this is Ashley Hughes, and we are your middle high school gymnastics coaches, and we're here to speak on behalf of our program and our girls. It was about mid-February that it was brought to our attention that Edgerton High School inquired about co-op with Milton for this sport of gymnastics. Edgerton currently does not have the funding or facility to create their own team, so we were asked to consider co-op. Due to our drawing enrollment, Milton was moved to Division 1 this past season and had to compete against the largest gymnastic powerhouses in the state. For this reason, we decided to consider co-op with Edgerton. I think that every coach and competitor wants to be a part of a competitive team with depth. Co-op with Edgerton would help us be competitive in our difficulty one placement. Just filling first these spots doesn't make a team competitive. Being placed to the Division 1 sectional has pushed our gymnasts to work harder and accept the challenge. They made more commitment during the offseason to stand out in our conference and our sectional. Our scores this season reflected their hard work. However, after completing our first season Division 1, we now see the challenges ahead of us and the urgency to fill a full lineup for our team. Giving students from Edgerton the opportunity to be a part of our program will help us face the challenges of unfilled spots and will provide our team with more depth. Gymnastics is a sport that has given both of us the foundation and passion for coaching. We never want our gymnast to have regrets about holding back or not achieving their goals or reaching their full potential. Having competition and depth within our own team will make each individual stronger every gymnast. Some people fear competition, but we fear, we see that fear has two meanings. You can either fight everything and run, or face everything and wrestle. While it's uncomfortable to be outside of our comfort zones, when we actually take time to step outside, we find our most growth and our greatest potential. At the end of our seasons, we hope it's not just about the letter on the jacket, the medals, or all of the awards. It's about building inner strength, courage, perseverance, and leadership while demonstrating commitment to something that you love and are passionate about. There's a difference between interest and commitment. When you're interested in doing something, you only do it when it's really worth it. When you're committed to something, you accept no excuses, only results. We as coaches are fully committed to helping our gymnasts reach the highest potential both individually and as a team. So we hope we consider the co-op with Edgerton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Himmel. The next on the list is Harvey Seif.
Harvey Seif, we're quick to 90 seconds now. I just wanted to recognize the great turnout that we had tonight. It shows again that the community is highly involved in community activities, including school. That being said, I had expressed a couple of concerns, both about coming at the last meeting and again tonight to the attorney from the district. One of the concerns is the fact that that building, the way the building was held tonight, there was very, there could have been serious concerns about the possibility of a fire code. Why there was not a fire marshal at the building to determine whether it's safe or not, I don't know, or should have been. Also, the other concern that I brought up at the time, both the attorney had also to Bob meeting before, was the fact that despite the great turnout, there were going to be a number of people whose voices were not going to be heard either due to the fact that they were working, they were homebound, it might be caregivers that couldn't get there, people might have driven by the parking lot and had seen all the vehicles and were discouraged and maybe turned away. And in the mission statement that was pointed out at meeting, that the board wants to hear everybody's citizens' voice, if that's true the case, since we knew about the possibility that the building was going to be sold months in advance, there should have been more opportunity for public meetings, discussions, and a better place to vote from the way it's conducted. And while the vote is already done, we know what the outcome is, I want to submit this petition to the board for their perusal so that we have another vote in the future that we're aware that maybe we need to look at it differently. I was out and about after the Wednesday meeting that determined they were going to head with the votes in the community, and I had a number of people that signed this petition indicating that they were not satisfied with the way it was conducted. Short-term notice the fact that not everybody's going to be able to get their vote that was heard. So anyway, I have two six pages of signatures, I'd like to present that to the board for your perusal.
Okay. Thank you, Harvey. The next name on the list, Mr. Todd Henry, you did not signify one way or the other if you'd like to speak. Okay, Todd Henry? You'd like to speak? Okay.
Hi, I'm Todd Henry, 5544 North State Drive. I'm here about the gymnastics co-op. Yes, we've heard from the coaches, but I have girls on the team and I guess the co-op. We do, this year we did make cuts, we have 20 girls trying out. Hockey's a little different than gymnastics, as far as positions on varsity. I know she talked about competitiveness and all of them, everybody wants to compete, but truth is, people want to, at least compete on varsity. Hockey with all positions, there's 14 varsity positions, gymnastics, there might be eight. Some schools are only five, so there's a lot of opportunities to compete that varsity line. So unfortunately, getting into Division 1, not the sectional. Now, the sectional we're in, we did beat Craig and Parker, so we didn't finish last in the sectional. We are competitive on a weekly basis. We, I believe, did tie for our conference championship this year. So I do realize this would benefit Edgerton, I do realize we would receive some money which would help the program. But it almost feels like we have a whole team, so by accepting that money and giving them the opportunity to take the risks as well, almost like outsourcing our varsity positions, our opportunities, to people from other districts. Now, Edgerton does, their girls have choices, they could school choice to us. Or for Edgerton and Evansville, neither one of those, they have programs now also, they could possibly maybe meet together and form a co-op on themselves. And right now, we do have enough girls, and we are competitive on a weekly basis. If the weekly competitiveness isn't enough anymore, and you need to get state that is the need, then maybe other sports may need to look at co-op too in order to get state, compete at state level. Time, they say time is everything, I just don't believe this is the right time for no one to...
Thank you, Henry. The next one on the list is Lance Hunter.
The conflict of interest is a situation in which a person is in a position to derive a personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. During the last two board meetings, a board member recommended to the board and future boards to use a short-term loan instead of dipping into the fund balance. I have to wonder if these short-term loans would be processed through where this person is employed. This may be a conflict of interest. Also during the March 5th special meeting, a board member up for reelection participated in conversation accusing two other candidates in the same election and seconded the motion to censure one. I have to wonder why this board member did not recuse herself from the conversation and vote, as her actions could be perceived as an attempt to sway votes that might be a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Let's see, the next person that has signified that they would like to speak is Carrie Hurley.
As I understand it, Carl Schultz has informed the board that through the experience he has gained through his business, he can create several classrooms within the existing high school. I hope this will be discussed during the meeting tonight as its part of our facility assessment.
Thank you, Miss Hurley. The next person is Ryan Utrinder.
Hello, everybody, Ryan Utrinder, 349 North Side Drive, Wisconsin. Just trying to digest tonight. There were a lot of comments at the hall zone, both ways, from both sides of the spectrum. And I do believe both sides, you know, explaining their interests. It's a no vote, but what I heard, and I know the board can hear this, and I give kudos to the board and admin for the tough jobs that you guys have to do to find ways for this community to grow. I heard "not yet" or "not that." I didn't hear an outright "no." So it's all in my brain at least, and I'm bashing my brain, trying to believe something. I heard "not no," excuse me, "not yet." And I'm very passionate about this community, and I want it to be able to grow, and I respect how we want to grow. But it's tough, and I appreciate everybody's efforts, and I hope that those ideas and people at that, who are at that meeting, keep showing up to share their ideas. Because without loss, I can see how some of the people might be, but I hope it's a "not yet." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Utrinder. The last person is Mr. Himmel.
You created a piasco. I would hope you could do better in the future. Main thing that I have is a conflict of interest. You have a teacher on this board that advertises being the union president. Now, that is a real great conflict of interest, and I can't understand why you haven't addressed it. In the private sector, that would not wash, it would not be allowed. So that's the main thing. I gotta walk all the way back.
Thank you, Mr. Himmel. Normally, we ask for those that may not have signed up, if they would like to speak.
I could have taken one time.
So is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item number eight, the Human Resources Committee report. Betsy, help you. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to get this meeting done sooner than later. I'm sorry, student council report.
So on March 2nd, student council hosted the winter dance. We got a fun turnout, so we were glad it all worked out, resulted in success. And so now, we're just kind of looking forward to finishing up the research, and getting some of our external resources.
Any questions for Ms. Quiney? Okay, thank you. Now, we're on to item eight, Betsy.
Thank you, Tom. Human Resources Committee met on Friday, March 9th. One item early on our agenda in open session, and that was an update on teacher compensation and communication schedule. You received in your packet and from Chris Handouts related to compensation schedules and where we're at at this point in time in terms of budgeting for next year. That communication piece is fluid in terms of dollar amount, but we're narrowing it down, and I feel pretty good about where we're at compared to budget. So we had an initiation, if you have questions, you can let me know. Also, we will be, we do need to schedule a negotiation session with the MEA. As a reminder, we only negotiate on base salary. At our first meeting in April, our intent is to have a closed session with the board to discuss that negotiation and then make a decision and then meet after that with the MEA, and that is our normal process that happens this time of year. So I'm going to keep that short. Any other comments?
Just that the highest offer that could be negotiated is, this EPI for the new year end is 1.26%.
2.13. 2.13.
2.13, I'm sorry. 2.13%. So that's the very highest possible. Okay?
Questions?
Item number nine is for the Planning Committee report. Betsy, you're right then.
The strategic plan, we met on Thursday, March 8th. We had two items on our agenda. The first was a review of our revised and updated current strategic plan. We, I think everyone was there, was here except for maybe Karen. We will post that update or send you copies of that, go through that whole piece tonight. It is extremely important, though, that we as a board look at, know where we're at in terms of where we've been with our strategic plan. We also talked about the idea of recreating a new, revising that plan in a new format, and I think the members of the committee were certainly ready to accept that. We will at our next meeting go into a little more detail on what that's going to look like, and we'll come back to the board with that new format at some point in time. But I want to thank Tim and all the administrators who gave updates on that plan. We had tremendous successes with the goals that we had set, and felt very comfortable that we had made a lot of progress towards that strategic plan. But we also know we need to, like I said, revise it, revise the format, make it a little simpler, a little more user-friendly, and also make sure that we're updating it and coming back to board on a regular basis, because that strategic plan really does set forth what our goals and really what the objectives of this board are. And then the second piece was the discussion on the next steps in the facilities assessment process. We had some really good discussion about, really about process and where we need to go. I sent the board a, really what the committee put together in terms of some proposed parameters for facilities improvement solution. And what I'd really like you to do is, we're not taking any action on this tonight, I'd really like the board members to walk through those parameters. I believe we had consensus from the committee on the parameters. I did rewrite them, though, so there may be some more work that we need to do with those. But we really felt we needed to set some parameters that would help us move forward. So that was the first brainstorming piece that we did. And again, board has that, and I encourage you all to read that over that carefully, let me know if you've got some issues. We will be revising that at our next strategic plan meeting. So, and one piece of that, just saying that it's imperative that the entire board support whatever solution is ultimately proposed. I think that's true with the parameters, too. We all need to agree that these, that we can all agree on these parameters, and so again, we need to have some additional discussion and make some changes so that we come to consensus. I think that's really important. The other items that we talked about then, we did some brainstorming on where we go from here, what's the process going to be. What we agreed on was that we need to finalize these parameters, have them approved by the board. We talked about creating a list of needs from the previous referendum and working together to refine that, and then developing a process for prioritizing needs that includes input from administration staff, students in the community. I think that was a question about that tonight. Yes, we will be asking the community for, at the very beginning of this, as we go back and look at those needs, and then we'll also be including the community, obviously, as we work forward and try to develop some association response. So again, I think we have almost two-hour meeting and putting in a pretty short condensed version, but shall we, Ryan and Utrinder, tell us where they're in the strategic plan?
And one is, do you have a meeting date for the next strategic plan?
Our next strategic plan is, meeting is set for Wednesday, April 4th at 4:30. So we will be heading toward our next board meeting, which again, if you have any input on the parameters, all the board members will be grateful if you could get that to me and/or come to that meeting so we can discuss it. And then the intent would be to bring those parameters to the first board meeting for our next board meeting for approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Betsy. Item number 10, for the college credit program, ECTP, and College, Start College Now, request. Mr. Himmel.
All right, good evening. This is the same report that you used to have with the youth options program, but starting next year, the state of Wisconsin has split that program into two separate programs. One is the early college credit, that's for those students pushing, high school students who plan a T. College credit through the University of Wisconsin system, most students that's at UW-Wentwater or UW-Rott County. And then the Start College Now program, which is through the technical college system. So it took, the state took one program, split it into two, because that's what they do in the state. All right. And there are several rules that along with each, but very, and simply put, students can take up to 18 credits between the Wisconsin technical college system and the Wisconsin system, all in high school. There's some parameters that they have to meet, and it's very similar to youth options, and there's a similar course in high school that they've not taken, they've got to take that, and a number of courses, students actually, they reject before I got to this list. But also, students can also choose to take now college credits, take courses in college just for college credits, even if they haven't taken a course here, they choose to, but they would not pay for the tuition for that. There's also a system now where you keep some of the cost back to, that will come back in the spring. Now, while there's 83 credits of requests on the list that I have for you, that's, those are the requests, when students actually choose to enroll, they find out what the schedules are, if it works or not, it's always going to be between the last and then. But all the students on the list before you read the requirements, and I would be needing to get a signature from the board members today. Are there any questions about Start College Now or Early College Credit?
Any questions or comments? This is not an action item, we don't need to go on it, so if no other comments or questions, thanks, Mr. Himmel.
Thank you.
Item number 11, discussion possible action on athletic co-op programs. Mr. Hamel.
Okay, we have three, three of the co-ops to discuss tonight. The first one was, you've already heard, some information about that, and you'll see an email about it as well, gymnastics co-op with Edgerton. Edgerton contacted us and asked if we would be interested in hosting their students as part of our team as a co-op. So in the past, every time anybody's ever asked, would you be a part of your co-op in gymnastics, I've always said no, without hesitation, because when you co-op, you add up the enrollments from the schools, and that's the enrollment you compete at. We were in Division 2, and being a little bit larger Division 2, we added anybody to our co-op that bumped us automatically to Division 1 where we didn't want to be. Now, because of our current enrollment, we are in Division 1, as you heard earlier, and so adding a co-op team, or three, or eight, wouldn't change our division placement as far as Division 1 or 2. The coaches did a lot of research on that, where we're at, enrollment-wise compared to other schools, and we are near the bottom of Division 1, we're only within about two or three schools, it all depends on what everybody came in for the third Friday conference. It looks like there are at least two schools that are going to still be below us, and we're going to be in Division 1 no matter what. be in Division I no matter what. And it goes on our September count, that's where we compete at next school. So there'd be no change, is my point in all that, right? Two reasons to do a co-op. One is to make sure there's enough members of a team. In this case, as you know, we've got good numbers in gymnastics, so we don't need kids to make the team. The second reason is to provide an opportunity to build a program, which I think we can do for Edgerton, at least give them a shot to see if they have the interest in kids to participate, and potentially maybe do, as some have suggested, help them build numbers, they could maybe co-op with another school who's building numbers as well. So all co-ops that I'm talking about tonight are one-year co-ops. They used to always be a two-year deal, but because of the massive sizes of some co-ops in hockey and gymnastics, co-ops are now limited to just one year at a time. So this would be a one-year co-op with Edgerton. If after one year we decide that we don't want to do that, or Edgerton decides they don't want to do that, that relationship would end, and we would just continue to move on. Edgerton's will, has agreed to, if their board agrees as well, but through their athletic director, they would pay $500 per student, athlete that comes over. One of the things I wanted to make sure was is that we did not, that we could cover the uniform costs and then any extra fees that it might be if we could possibly get into an additional event. So my plan with the gymnastics would be, if this co-op were to go through, is that we would not cut any students of Milton. We would bring everybody, Edgerton thought maybe they had up to five kids, one of whom they've said has some experience in gymnastics. And we would, I would reassign a coach and bring another coach to the gymnastics team. And we would go early and late practices, just like we do in other winter sports. And I think, in my point, my part, I feel like we would be giving more opportunity to our kids by going ahead and adding that on, as well as, I think, making us a little bit stronger and deeper as a program. If the coaches said no way, absolutely, we wouldn't be having this on the agenda tonight. But our coaches are supporting this, and I'm supporting that. So I'm supporting a one-year trial here with Edgerton High School in gymnastics.
Any questions from board members to Mr. Hamel?
There's enough, I don't know if I asked you this, there's enough for JV team, varsity team to fill all the spots. Are you struggling like with?
There are, there are numbers of bodies in gymnastics. Not everybody can do the vault, not everybody can do the bars, floor exercises or anything. So sometimes we could have 25 kids and not fill all the spots, because we have 15 of them who are doing balance beam or something like that. So anyway, so it's really hard to say that even adding a, you know, an Edgerton kid or two, if they would be able to fill the spots as well. So I couldn't stand it and tell you that we could do it with that.
So you're saying, Brian, that we wouldn't cut any of Milton kids, but there'd always been opportunity for them in JV and varsity, one or the other?
Right. I think what this does, it forces me to, to make sure we do that, and I think forces us, because you cannot cut in a co-op. Once you have a co-op, you cannot cut kids. And we could go without any kids, as it was in charge, but I think we could add four or five kids, it would be worth reassigning a coach from another sport and pushing them into that spot. And then everybody would get the attention they need given practices in the space that we have and among the coaches that we have.
So what, I guess, I'm thinking, what if I turn out, turn out to be 30 kids, for example? And I don't know what objective. And then we get five, and those turn to 35. My concern is that they're all in that balcony, right?
Right. That's why we'd have to go in two shifts.
You'd have to go two different practices.
We'd go in two shifts, yeah.
So JV, one practice, varsity, another practice?
Correct. And that's what our basketball team's going to be like and so forth.
I just don't want opportunities for our Milton kids to do that.
Right. And I, you know, I would say this year we did take away opportunities because we had two coaches and only so much time and space, and against, kids are beginners, they're already behind. I think in this way, we can keep all beginners and give them a little chance to, some of them may be naturals.
And the Edgerton kids are paying their own way over?
Yep. They're responsible for getting here. We'll put them into their, we'll coach them and put them into their positions and try and get them involved in as many events as, as we would if our own kids.
Any other questions from the board members? And I believe we do need a board to approve this. Do I correct this correctly?
Yes.
For that, I would entertain a motion.
Any motion? Do you need members to approve the co-op between Edgerton and Milton Gymnastics for one year?
Okay. Shelley made the motion. Go ahead, the second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or discussions? All right. So before we vote, you guarantee me that no Milton kid will be left out of their opportunity?
You mean, no Milton kid will be cut?
Will be cut, and have a good chance to be either varsity or JV and compete in other.
Yeah. If they, if anybody's going to earn those spots, I guess, but.
Right. Well, obviously, they have to show up for practice.
What I, what I can't tell you is that to bring an Edgerton kid come over here and will do better than a Milton kid and may be able to do a JV meet instead of a Milton kid that night, or some nights. The lineups, the JV lineups, I assume change quite often. Yeah. So, so everybody rotates around the JV lineups again. But I cannot guarantee that a Milton kid will be displaced, will not be displaced by Edgerton's athlete if that, if that athlete isn't the same event and is a better, better performer, better athlete that, that ever asked. That I cannot tell you.
And that's what we take with any co-op, correct, is that we understand that?
It is, yep.
Playing pool is even more than.
Right. And then, again, as the coaches talk, they, they think that's good competition, as opposed to, I've already got my spot, and I know I've got equal pushing to do better.
But there is recognition in gymnastics, there's more limited spots than hockey as a, as a co-op, correct?
Yes, especially when you have like a couple of kids that are really good at all events, and they take up four events. So that's one of the five spots in each event.
I suspect this, do we know many of these Edgerton kids, you know, I'm telling you they are, I mean, are they, this is something they haven't been doing, they haven't had any team at all?
Yeah. The information I have is that they have one kid coming over that's got some club experience, and they've got up to five total, may come. Now, when they, when they're time to sign up and you have to come to Milton and the $500 fee, however they figure that out, the district may pay half, the student athlete pays half, or something like that, but they may change their mind when they get one kid.
So, yeah, so because sometimes once they see when the practices are scheduled, all of a sudden, that does appear as something else to do.
Seems like a good idea at the start.
So you take the $500 and end up quitting after, let's say, a week, and give that, and then give that back to them?
I, I would consider that giving them back after a week, yes. If they quit after three or four weeks, then I think that's.
Right. And then they'll just, all right. Next. Okay. Any other comments? Tim?
And I think that, obviously, you know, co-ops, they come along, we've been a part of them, we've been on both ends of it, though, where they've helped us out as well, other school districts, and again, if it's, to me, as we've had this discussion numerous times, if we're looking at, at benefiting the program, enhancing the program, and I trust that the recommendation from Brian and the coaches, it is solid. And we've been on the other end of that, where we've moved it back to be a part of the co-op other schools as well at times. And so I think that this is a good opportunity for our, for our program as we move forward.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. I think I will request the roll call vote on this. So a motion has been made by Shelley, Simon, and Betsy. All of them taking, all of, what would it be, the roll call, roll call vote, Shelley?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Right? I struggle with this one, but I'm going to say no. Karen?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's six to one, so gymnastics co-op. Five to one. Five to one. Thank you. Okay. The next is the girls' hockey co-op with Lloyd Memorial.
Okay, so this one, we are on the other end of this. We are part of their program. This year, we had eight girls, and so I think some of the better hockey players as well. Next year, we will have three girls as part of the co-op, and roughly for the next two years. So the Edgerton, or the, sorry, the Lloyd Memorial co-op, Lloyd Memorial is the host of the co-op, but I'm going to read you the teams that are in this co-op, and this is how the co-ops can get a little crazy. Lloyd Memorial, Albany, Broadhead, Clinton, Janesville Craig, Leesville Parker, Milton, Monroe, Turner, and because that isn't enough, they're adding Orangeville, Illinois, and Lena, Illinois this year. All right. It sounds crazy, but here's how it really works in hockey. Albany, Broadhead, Orangeville, Lena, all skate at Monroe, in the Monroe Youth Hockey Program. So those kids all skate together and want to play together, just like the Milton kids skate in Janesville with the Fury Youth Program, Janesville and Lloyd, I suppose, but those are the Lloyd, Clinton, Craig, Parker, Milton Turner kids. So we really have two youth organizations that combine in a co-op that has 74 schools, approximately. About 10, about 10 schools. So that's how co-ops kind of get crazy. And to figure our enrollment in this co-op, we had all those, those schools enrollments, and that enrollment is unknown to me because I don't really care because they are observing us, letting us in. So there's only one division in hockey, and so it doesn't matter what your enrollment is. So anyway, we have three, three girls in it this next year, down from the eight, so it will be a lot less expensive for our portion of the cost for the Rock County Fury for the next year.
So in this frame, if there's a lot more kids, it possibly would be less than two, right?
Right, yeah. The more, in this co-op, the more kids there are in it, they divide total expenses per athlete. And that's how they figure the cost because there's so many schools.
Any other questions for Brian concerning the girls' hockey co-op with Lloyd Memorial?
We won't have any ice time in Illinois, will be split between Janesville, Lloyd, Monroe for practices?
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
WII accepts two Illinois teams, then?
They will, yeah. As long as.
I know they've done so for Lloyd before.
Every one of these boards has to approve this co-op.
So maybe WII?
Yeah. I don't know what the acronym of their team would be. Probably just call it anything.
Any other questions or comments from Brian concerning the, the girls' hockey?
I do approve of the renewal of the girls' hockey co-op.
Okay, we have Betsy, Milton, and Shelley as a second. Any other conversation, discussions, concerns? I'm seeing that I think we'll do the roll call vote again on this one as well. We'll start on a dissent time, this time, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Betsy, Shelley?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So it passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you.
As long as you're up there.
The last one, our boys' hockey. Last year, we co-op with four, we had about 20 Milton players, which I think after seeing what the girls' numbers were for all those schools to make one team, the fact that we had about 20 kids just from Milton who played boys' hockey is, that's pretty incredible when you look at the two divisions, oh, sorry, one division in hockey, trying, they're trying to break it into two because of the number of boys' teams. But since there's one, it doesn't matter if we add Fort Atkinson's enrollment again for the division boys. So last year, we had 20. Fort Atkinson thought they could maybe get six, seven. We're thinking, great, that gives us mid twenties. We can have our JV team play X number of games, and that's, now, now you've got a program. Fort Atkinson's ended up, at the end of the day, like I was talking about with Edgerton girls, they sent one. One freshman came to play hockey, very nice kid, wonderful family, but he could only play one position, you know, he's only one kid. So that put us at 21, which limited our ability to play many JV games. We did get some. This year, I think, we have about 25 kids out for boys' hockey. But you never know, boys' hockey, if kids are going to play another year of bantam and not play their freshman year in high school, or they're going to go somewhere else and play for the Caps. So we're never guaranteed knowing those 25 kids are all going to come out. I'm hoping that Fort Atkinson can get a couple more kids this year, maybe a couple more freshmen, and send us a few kids over to keep us, and guarantee us in that mid-twenty range, just in case we lose a few to either another school or another form of hockey. So then, they pay the fee, the $600 hockey fee that our boys pay, so that's all we got out of the, the one student this year.
Mr. Hamel, what's, what's, it would be a good number of, of players on hockey team? I mean, is it 25 or 30, or what, what would be a?
Yeah, I would love to have 30 kids if we're going to have a full varsity and full JV schedule. 30 would be a good number. I mean, there's five on a line plus the goalie. We'd like to have three lines, so there's 15. A lot of schools are going to play 10 kids on JV possibly or something, just because those are the kids that are getting in the first school for varsity, and so 30 would be a great number. 25 still makes it so it's possible everybody can get some, some time. And they all practice at the same time.
Brian, do we know how many of those 20 players from this year are coming back for next year?
We don't, I can't say for sure, but we graduated three.
Seventeen.
Three shows, three days, yes.
Statewide, is hockey qualifying as a sport, or is it a marmot?
I think it's growing. I don't know how. It's expensive for parents and kids to play hockey. Ice time is, is expensive, there's not ice, you know, you follow the ice, kind of, that's like, again, like that girls' co-op, all those, they go to where the ice is, and so I'm, I'm real good with Lloyd, Janesville, and sort of all playing together. So I think it's growing. I read an article today, totally unrelated, maybe to high school hockey, but the University of Illinois is looking to ask, are you, would you want men's hockey program? I don't know how to just start that, especially in hockey, but Southern Illinois is known for great hockey, as we all know.
Are you, are thinking that we'll still have the agreement with Stoughton as far as ice, and then that agreement would?
Yeah, we already are. Our games are scheduled, lots of them already there, and we're really, I think, Tim knows the people there, but I think we have a really outstanding relationship with the man's center. They've been very, very good. They've been very, very good to work with, they like having us, obviously, we're a tenant, and we pay some of their bills, but they've been great to work with. So, that makes it a lot easier, knowing that, that they're working with us.
It's not an example of our program, when you have it, it will come. We have a, our hockey program has been growing since we, since the kids here can wear the Milton sweater. We did, we've had more kids in the program, and we go to our games up there. By far, the largest crowds are the Milton crowds, and we've got a good relationship with the man's center, as Brian said. Works out really well.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Hamel concerning the boys' hockey co-op with Fort Atkinson? I agree with you, Mark.
I approve of the renewal of the boys' hockey co-op with Fort Atkinson.
I second. We have a motion, Betsy, and a second by Don. Any other discussions, comments? Would you be, voice vote again? We'll start with Betsy and go one thing middle.
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it's six to zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Thank you, I'll have some paperwork to sign at some point. But I remember one-year contracts, I don't know, signature.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 12, miscellaneous versus staffing, professional support, staff hires, resignation, and retirement. Seeing that we have one resignation and one contract letter we want.
Can you approve of the staffing update as presented?
Second.
And we want to make a motion by Betsy and a second by Karen to approve the staffing report, although, favor of saying by my side, aye?
Aye.
Both, motion passed. Gifts and donations. See, we have a total of $1,155.50. Need a motion? Yes, we do.
I make a motion, I accept the donations of $1,155.50.
Second.
We have a motion by, a second by Karen, any discussions? Any none, although, favor of saying by my side, aye?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes with gratitude from the board. I say this quite often, it's amazing how the community and the parent groups sometimes are very supportive of the district, and it's certainly appreciated. Item number 112 is meeting date for not coming board in committee meetings. Mr. Sager?
We have still a couple, March 22nd is the school board and city council candidate forum at City Hall at 6:00 P.M. Also have the spring election, April 3rd, our strategic planning committee meeting here at 4:30 on the paywall of court. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is April 9th here at 6:30.
That's it. At this point, I would entertain a motion for Karen. We have Karen and Brian, although, they're staffed. Both, thank you for putting up with me. And if you have any complaints, talk to Bob Callender.